The clerk will please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
President.
Counselor O'Malley.
President.
Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancey.
Yes.
And Counselor Zachem. Mr. President, we do have a quorum.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time for all counselors and guests to please rise. I will ask Counselor McCarthy to come to the podium to introduce today's clergy. And after the invocation is delivered, I would ask all members to remain standing, and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance, which Counselor McCarthy will lead us in. Counselor McCarthy, you have the podium.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have a great honor today to introduce my friend, Father Gustave Miracle. And with all the snow, Counsel President and I were joking that we do need a miracle, as it will soon go away, we hope. Father Miracle is associate pastor at St. Angelus Church, which was my dad's old stomping ground and my family's stomping ground. He was born in Kinscoff, Haiti, Jean Gustave Miracle. He was ordained a Catholic priest in 2002 for the Archdiocese of Port-au-Prince. After working for years in many parishes, he successfully appointed the Archdiocese Director of Youth Ministry and the rector of the so-called Year of Foundation of Future Priests. In May of 2014, he graduated with a master's degree in social ethics from Boston College, and today he works again at St. Angelus Parish in Matapan. He's doing wonderful things in the Haitian community and leading that part of District Five in such a positive way, and I'd like to welcome him to the podium. Thank you.
Peace be with you. From the Gospel of Jesus, according to Matthew, but Jesus among them and said, "You know that the rulers of the Gentiles, Lord, it over them, and the great ones make their authority over them felt; but it shall not be so among you. Rather, whoever wishes to be great among you shall be your servant; whoever wishes to be first among you shall be your slave. Just so, the Son of Man did not come to be served, but to serve, and to give his life as ransom for many." Three lessons can be kept from the master of love to his disciple. First, Jesus teaches us, "The one who acts by ambition to dominate others will not be rewarded by God." Second, opposition of authority gives birth to envy and jealousy. Third, the leader who seeks a better life for his or her citizens will know longevity." That's my wishes for all of you. And now, please bow the heads, close the eyes, and let us pray to the Lord. O you who are without change, Lord of time, God of truth, as fire consigns the dead tree to the root, when ambition, jealousy, and envy dominate us, spirit of service purify us, as the river leads torrents to the plain, may your power resumes our dispersed forces in the quest for the common good, as once your breath in the sea open a road, when doubt overwhelms, open an outcome into the impossible. Invent once again to each Boston city councilor the path of a new exodus to a better life for all our citizens. Come on your time and consume the work that this council will accomplish today. We ask this through the one who teaches us the spirit of service, Jesus Christ, your beloved Son. He reigns into our hearts and good intentions today, tomorrow, forever and ever. Amen.
I thank you, Father Miracle, for your inspiring message. Counselor McCarthy will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Which stands, one nation under God. Thank you, Counselor McCarthy, and thank you, Father Miracle. Thank you for being here. I would like to thank all my colleagues for being so prompt and getting back here in time for the... Oh, yeah, and could you please add Counselor Jackson and Counselor Presley to the... and for the row call? Did we get everybody else that's here? No, 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 I see your absence. This is the same time she had mother duty last week, so... If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand approved. Singing here, no objections, the minutes are so approved. Communications from His Honor, the Mayor, Madam Clerk, please.
Docket number 0477, message in order for approval of a home rule petition to the General Court entitled, "Petition for a Special Law Regarding an Act Relative to Snow Removal Penalties."
A docket 0477 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, reports of public officers and others.
Would you like me to read both?
Yeah, read docket 0478 and 0479, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 0478, communication was received from Ronald W. Rackhouse, Assessing Commissioner, of the appointments of Brian Gaines and Louis Aguilier as assistant assessors. And docket number 0479, communication was received from Joseph E. Connerton, Executive Director of the Boston Retirement Board, on the appropriation for the FY 2016, which commences July 1st, 2015, for non-teachers.
A docket 0478 and docket 0479 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, matters recently heard for possible action, please.
Docket number 0378, message in order authorizing the issuance of tax-exempt refunding bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $65 million in order to pay the principal redemption premium, if any, and interest on the bonds or other obligations to be refunded and costs of issuance of the refunding bond.
The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counselor Siomo, on docket 0378.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on Monday, March 2nd. CFO Dave Sweeney, as well as First Assistant Deputy Treasurer Vivian Leo, provided testimony. This $65 million authorization will allow for the administration to participate in a refunding bond sale, to take advantage of Boston's excellent bond rating, and refinance our bonds from a 4.6% weighted average rate to a 2.3% rate. Subject to the outcome of the bond sale, we could realize a potential $9.1 million in net present value savings. The savings are expected to be realized between FY 16 and FY 29. I commend the administration for the foresight to refinance our debt and lock in lower rates to reduce debt expense and maintain the same payment timeline. I recommend passage of docket 0378. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. Counselor Yancey?
Thank you very much. Mr. President, as the Chairman mentioned, we had a hearing on this refinancing order. And to be quite candid with you, Mr. President, I was reluctant to vote on this today because the administration at the hearing failed to clearly articulate which loan orders would be in refinance. And this body is not a rubber stamp, as you know, Mr. President. But this morning, I was happy to receive some of the information that I had requested, most specifically the official statement, which is a document that we use when we go to the bond market to explain the uses of the proposed funds. Because I received that this morning, I will be voting for it. However, I will ask that the administration in the future be more thorough in their initial presentation. We did not have any schedule of repayments at that particular hearing, and that was not acceptable. But I am prepared to vote on it, since the administration did provide some information that I found on my desk this morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Counselor Siomo moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0378. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 03 delta vote. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, yes. Counselor Yancey. Counselor Yancey, yes. And Counselor Zachem. Counselor Zachem, we have a unanimous vote on docket number 0378, Mr. President.
The clerk has informed me that docket 0378 has passed unanimously. Please, Madam Clerk, would you record that Counselor Wu was present?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Docket number 0267, ordinance amending CBC, Section 6-6.3, Schedule of Parking Fines.
Our Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty, on docket 0267.
67 remaining committee would also defer to the lead sponsor if he wants to make any comments. And it was a very interesting hearing. It happened on Monday, this past Monday, where the lead sponsor is recommending that we increase fines for people who park in residence spots during Red Sox games. We had a broader conversation as to whether or not that should be something that we do citywide to include other district colleagues' districts, for example, around the TD Bank North and other venues where there are lots of events, or potentially to make it a tolerable offense, which may get to the crux of the issue. And addressing that issue is one of the concerns that I've raised, which is the handicap parking abuse and fraud. One of the concerns is that if we increase the fine to disincentivize folks from parking in a residence spot as opposed to parking and paying for parking in a parking lot, that they'll in turn just come in with a placard and put it on the windshield. And not only will they be taking residence spots, but they'll also be taking very precious meter spots that seems to be a problem citywide. So, very interesting discussion. We had great participation from residents, neighborhood associations, from Counselor Zachem's district, along with the Boston Red Sox, who are willing to partner to try to find a solution with our Transportation Department. So, this may be something that we could potentially have a working group on, but for the time being, ask that it remaining committee until the lead sponsor and other colleagues have an opportunity to weigh in. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Zachem?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Counselor Flaherty for chairing a very informative hearing. We had quite a few members of the Fenway community, the Civic Association up here, and I look forward to working with Counselor Flaherty and any of my colleagues who are interested in this, making sure that we try and have a solution in place for the Fenway neighborhood in time for the coming baseball season. I think it was noted, we hope there'll be many more than 81 home games this year at Fenway Park, and it's certainly, I think, a concern for neighbors there that as people from out of town are coming in there and not really respecting the resident park, and we need to find a solution there. And excited to hear from the Transportation Department, they thought this was one of a potential other viable solutions. I look forward to working together to get that done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Docket 0267 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0374, order for hearing to discuss Roca's continued work in Boston.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety, Counselor Murphy, on docket 0374.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on this matter yesterday, and I'm recommending at this time that the matter be placed on file. We had a healthy exchange with Molly Baldwin and her team from Roca. And those of you, I think everybody in this chamber knows Roca and the quality of the work they do interceding with kids and others that are probably the baddest players in our neighborhoods. And Roca has just really gotten a foothold in Boston. They've been in East Boston for a while. They started in Chelsea, and they're moving into all of the Boston neighborhoods. And the upshot of the hearing was that the City Council and some of our partners in health care and in education would continue to strengthen Roca's availability to residents in Boston. And I want to thank all of my colleagues for attending a good hearing and place this matter on file at this time.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Docket 0374 will be placed on file. Motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0480, Counselor Linehan offered the following order for hearing regarding Boston 2030 to develop policies and projects to improve the transportation infrastructure for city residents.
Chair recognizes Counsel President Linehan.
Thank you, Vice President. I appreciate the opportunity. This is a hearing order. There's been a lot of discussion about infrastructure and whether it's related to the chaos around lack of infrastructure during the snowstorm, or about the future in talking about the Olympics. And Boston has already begun a process in which we start to think about what our infrastructure will look like and need to look like in 2030. And 2030 happens to be our 400th birthday. So, what I thought it would be, they've had a Go Boston 2030 is something that will, you know, last for five, 10, maybe even 15 years. The plan will develop a far-reaching vision that proposes transformative policies and projects to improve transportation for the city's residents, businesses, and visitors. The public engagement is a driving force behind this plan. Over a six-week period, they had the question campaign, and they collected 4,000 questions from 15 neighborhood stops in January and February. Go Boston 2030 will develop a vision report, including goals and targets, to release in the spring on 2015, and an action plan that they plan to do later in like 2060. So, I thought it was wise, based on all the infrastructure discussions, for us to bring 2030 down and start that discussion, to make sure that we're at the table trying to move this particular campaign and agenda forward, and given the importance of, the ever-importance of infrastructure improvements going forward, that this is a timely moment to do it. So, I would ask that it ends up in the appropriate committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Please place docket 0480 to the Special Committee on Transportation. Oh. Please sign on Counselor Jackson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Presley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Yancey, Counselor Zachem, Counselor Baker, and my name as well, Madam Clerk. And please put docket 0480 in the Special Committee on Transportation, Public Infrastructure Planning and Investment.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo.
Docket number 0481, Counselor O'Malley offered the following order for hearing to discuss the city's spring cleanup and street sweeping strategy.
Chair recognizes Counselor O'Malley on docket 0481.
Forget about Punxsutawney Phil. This morning, I saw about a half an inch of a stowaway grate on the side where I parked my car, and I think that was the surest sign that our warmer days are, will soon be upon us, coupled with the fact that it was a balmy 41 degrees walking into work this morning, and I felt like I was in the Bahamas. We are all incredibly well-versed on the winter of our discontent, and I'll stop with the metaphors, other than to say that this has been one likely for the record books, while we haven't quite broken the record. It's, we, I think, unfortunately, or perhaps not, will soon be upon it. We have had eight feet of snow between January 28th and February 15th, 2015 fall, in the city of Boston. And I know this body, and particularly Counselor Siomo and McCarthy, last week had a very important hearing order for looking at ways that we deal with the snow removal, and it's an important conversation to have. I was proud to support it, as I think everyone here was, and it's an important discussion to have, as we talk about ways that we can better remove snow, perhaps use some new technologies, perhaps use some tried and true methods that have worked in the past on ways that we can adapt, working with DPW and the men and women who are out there literally for days on end to try to make our streets safe. I wanted to come at it from a slightly different angle today, a snow-related topic, but less about the snow that's out there and more about what is underneath it. The record-setting snow accumulation has created huge snowbanks and narrowed streets, hindering the city's trash and recycling pickup, resulting in long delays for garbage and recycling removal. Under those mountainous snowbanks are tons of sand, road salt, trash, and other refuse that will litter the city's street once the snow melts. When the warmer temperatures arrive, there'll be increased demands on the city's street sweeping program. I believe the street sweeping program was scheduled to start in many parts of the city on March 1st. We're now on March 4th, and obviously, it's very difficult to do so. So, I want to talk about what our plan of attack is for dealing with, quite frankly, all of the mess that will be left when these snowbanks melt, in addition to what the flooding could look like. We're already seeing it. We're seeing an unprecedented amount of snow on the ground at one time. It's going to melt, hopefully sooner rather than later, hopefully gradually rather than all at once. But it is a real concern we have in terms of storm drains, in terms of people's houses, their basements. Luckily, you know, people, I think, were able to, I don't believe we had many major roof collapses in the city of Boston, but the next fear that I have is talking about flooding. So, there are a whole host of topics that I want to discuss, and I think this body can play a role in. Last January, I held a hearing on litter reduction and recycling, really working with the Main Streets Programs. Counselor Lamatina's been my partner in the Clean Boston Task Force that came from that. I think this is a logical next step. And while we should use this opportunity and use the weeks and months ahead to talk about how we can better deal with snow removal in the winters to come, I think we need to have a really soon, there is an immediacy to this hearing order, to just have an opportunity to sit down with our Public Works Department, our Recycling Department, other sanitation, as well as our businesses, and figure out ways that we can better identify what the needs are going to be and a better plan of attack for cleaning up the city. The Boston Shines, a tried and true program of First Mayor Marino and now Mayor Walsh is continuing to do it. We have no shortage of civic-minded folks who are looking to work and make sure that the streets are clean, but we are dealing with such an anomaly here with all of this snow, all of the debris and trash and rubbish strewn about underneath it. We have to clean it, and let's use this body as an opportunity to have this conversation, figure out the ways we can work with our neighborhoods, work with our business districts, work with our residents, and help navigate the bureaucracy to make sure that our clean streets are able to get back in the condition that we deserve and expect sooner rather than later. So, I thank you for the opportunity, Mr. President. Would just ask that we, wherever this matter is referred, we could have a hearing sooner rather than later. There's no, this isn't, you know, brain surgery here. We're not looking for any major initiatives, other than what can we do to make sure the streets are clean, given the fact that this is an unprecedented winter that we're dealing with. So, looking forward to continuing to work with all of you in the administration as we tackle this mountainous problem going forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for those metaphors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you, Mr. President. Rise to commend the author and also have my name added as a co-sponsor, as a long-term proponent of year-round street cleaning. Play would make a difference in this effort. But also, with interest, Counselor O'Malley's seventh whereas points out, public parks, playgrounds, ballfields, and other outdoor sports spaces may have been damaged by the excessive snow and sub-zero temperatures, which, it's true, because I'm getting calls across the city from little league leagues and also softball leagues, who are already anticipating the condition of their fields and are already talking about moving their stock dates back. So, hopefully, the author would consider bringing in some of the sports team leaders and league presidents from around the city to kind of get their input, to make sure that we, as their elected officials, are hearing their concerns, but also keeping the parks departments' feet to the fire with respect to getting out there and doing the best they can to get these fields in playing condition for the youth of Boston. So, look forward to the hearing, and hopefully, it's an expedited hearing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Please add Counselor Flaherty's name, Counselor Baker's name, Counselor Siomo's name, Counselor Jackson's, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Presley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Yancey, Counselor Zachem. And please add my name. The high school baseball, our spring sports season starts on the 16th of March, which is only about 12 days away. So, just, it is truly a pressing matter, but we're going to have to have alternative planning, so thank you for that, Counselor O'Malley. Docket 0481 is assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. Madam Clerk, personnel orders.
Docket number 0482, Counselor Linehan for Counselor Presley.
Counselor Presley moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0482. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0482 has passed. I've been informed by the clerk that there are no late-file matters. So, is there anybody who would like to pull something from the green sheets? Do you have buttons pressed, Counselor Jackson? We still have to go one more item, and then we'll do that. You can leave it flashing. No takers on the green sheets? So, there are two late-file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Singing, hearing, no objections, the matters are so added. The Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda is adopted. Counselor Jackson, for what purpose do you rise?
Unanimous consent to make a statement.
Hearing no objections, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, I wanted to, as the Education Chair, make this body aware that last night, the School Committee actually voted on... the School Committee actually voted on our new superintendent, Dr. Tommy Chang, and I am very enthusiastically supporting him. He, I spoke to him this afternoon. He is 39 years old, a young, innovative young man who started his career at Compton High School, spent six years there, has worked in the charter school side of things, but also came back to the district school side of things. He, I believe, will be a great addition to the city of Boston, and I think it is really going to be incumbent upon this body to make sure that he has an opportunity to meet all of the people in our neighborhoods and communities. And so, I would like to put forward a suggestion, and I would be willing to help with all of these, that each of the district councilors, and I love my at-large councilors too, but that each of the district councilors set up a time in their district to host the new superintendent, in the next month or so, so that we can actually get an opportunity to have him meet all of the great people who are in and around our community. He has agreed to that, and we would love to, I believe, welcome him before he gets ticketed, fined, or towed, which will happen at some point also. Mr. President, I also just simply want to take the opportunity to give props to one of our teammates and our colleagues. I want to give huge props to Ayanna Presley. I got to watch on C-SPAN, which is Counselor O'Malley's favorite channel, as she gave a rousing speech and receiving Emily's List Rising Star Award. She blew up Twitter and was on stage with Representative, former Representative Gabby Gifford. You have done us proud. You have represented the city of Boston with honor and distinction, and you tore it up. And I just simply... That's all, Mr. President.
Very good, Counselor Jackson, very good. Just to add to Counselor Jackson's comments about the new superintendent, I want to thank the mayor for allowing Counselor Jackson and I to sit in the interviews. We had an interview, Counselor Jackson was at all four, and I was at two. We actually interviewed the superintendent. I mean, that is, really bodes well for our relationship and our continued involvement in the School Department. And I think that the mayor's choice, and I totally agree, was, he, when in his election, he talked about the future of Boston, and you can see that in Tommy Chang, the future of our city. I didn't mean to steal some time from you, Counselor Presley, but, you know. For what purpose do you rise? Go ahead, Counselor Jackson.
I did, I'm sorry, and I'm remiss. I do also want to thank Mayor Walsh for opening the process up, for respecting the Council and giving the Chair of Education, as well as the Counsel President, not only a proverbial but a verbal, a real seat at the table in making this decision. I think this is one of the most important positions. Also, I do want to give a great deal of credit to Michael O'Neill, who is the Chair of the Boston School Committee and the School Committee members, for the deliberative process that they've been through over the course of 18 months, and returning with a great candidate in Tommy Chang. So, I do want to give credit to the mayor, as well as the head of the School Committee and the School Committee as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you again, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Presley, for what purpose do you rise?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make a couple of announcements. So, today is March 4th, what's the day? Okay, so, we are four days into Women's History Month, so I just wanted to officially acknowledge that March is Women's History Month, where we celebrate and trumpet the contributions of women. This, in a matter of days, March 8th, we'll be celebrating International Women's Day, which is about acknowledging the struggles of women socially, economically, and politically throughout our world. And then finally, there's a lot happening in this week. On Friday, we'll be celebrating the 50th anniversary of Bloody Sunday, and there will be, which was, so many of us have, you know, recently been reminded of the importance of that protest and ultimately resulting in the Voting Rights Act. And so, I know members of the congressional delegation, Senator Warren and others, will be heading to Selma for that anniversary, and we do have buses that are leaving from Boston with young people and elders to participate in this 50th anniversary celebration, and they need things. So, if you would like to, you know, make a donation of granola bars, or riding pads, or bottled water, or anything, I think it's incredible that they're doing this. And if you have questions about what you can contribute or what's needed, you can check in with my office. Thank you.
I thank you, Counselor Presley. I'd ask all guests and all members to please rise, as the Council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Lamatina, Suzanne Palmer. For Counselor Murphy, Ashlyn Senopoulos. For Counselor McCarthy, Murphy and Wu, Karen O'Connell. And for Counselor Flaherty and the Chair, Margaret Steiner. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the Council adjourns today, does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, March 11th, at 12 noon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Council is so adjourned.